Good morning and welcome to today's Board of Commissioners meeting this August 8, 2023. I'm pleased today that we have Pastor Locke with East Cobb Presbyterian Church. He will be providing our invocation and that will be followed by the pledge which will be brought by Deputy Statham. For those of you willing and able, please rise for our invocation and pledge.
Father, you encourage us to approach your throne of grace to receive mercy and help in our time of need. I think every day in our economy, every day in our communities for each other and for our constituents is a time of need. So we lift up the constituents, the members of this community, our neighbors, our friends, the people that as churches and as charities and as organizations, we seek to assist as a county, as these commissioners try and create policies that allow for flourishing in this county. We lift up the members of this county, we lift up the children of this county. We pray for safety, we pray for good education, we pray for these families to flourish, for our children to grow up and be ready to engage and to serve and to lead. We're thankful today for this meeting, for the people that you have brought to this table to lead and to make policy. And we ask for wisdom, we ask for your presence, we ask for you to guide in policies that will promote flourishing. We ask all this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our meeting is now officially called to order. Today, I'm pleased to announce that we have one presentation that will be brought by our Cobb EXO Alumni Association. And this is to present the recipient of the 2023 Martha Loog Excellence in Leadership Award. For those of you who are here presenting that award, please feel free to approach. And we look forward to seeing who our honorees and our ultimate recipient will be this year.
Good morning, my name is Luke Rector. Myself along with Kenya Jackson are the co-presidents of the EXO Alumni Association. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2023 Martha Loog Excellence Award. In 1993, the Alumni Association of Excel Management Development Program created an award to recognize Excel graduates who consistently display competence, excellence, integrity, professionalism, and other leadership qualities in their daily work. This year, we are celebrating 30 years of acknowledging and recognizing Cobb Excel alumni for the Martha Loog Award. Before we meet the nominees, we'd like to tell you a little bit about Martha Loog, the former Cobb employee for which the award is named. Martha was born and raised in Virginia and later moved to Georgia. She earned her degree in business from Kennesaw College. And when she took the Certified Public Accounting or CPA exam, she earned the highest score that had ever been received on the test. Her leadership skills, problem-solving abilities, management style, and professionalism, combined with her effort to create the county's first comprehensive annual financial report, led her to win the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. For nine years, Martha served as the Assistant Comptroller for Cobb County. Throughout her career, she displayed outstanding communication skills, unwavering integrity, and an amazing ability to foster a team atmosphere every day. While these brief bits of information cannot adequately describe the overall qualities and personality that made up Martha, we hope they do give you a little bit better understanding of why this award is part of her legacy.
Good morning, everyone. We also want to thank all of the family members and guests of the nominees that have been nominated today. We have four nominees this year. We would ask that you please come forward when your name is called. Our first nominee comes from the State Court Clerk's Office and is Court Support Manager Kristi Castile. Ms. Castile, would you please come forward? In her role as manager, she has exhibited qualities such as problem-solving, innovations, improvements, effective use of resources, and supporting her community. Ms. Castile assisted in creating a process for civil e-filing in 2016 before it was legislated as mandatory in 2019. In 2019, Ms. Castile led the court in innovation and problem-solving details required for the court to become paperless for civil files using technology and resources to save the county on paper and costly file folders. Ms. Castile was part of the School Bus Stop Arm Civil Case Project, working with Stop Arm Camera vendors and the Clerk's Office case management vendor to create an interface for both old and new systems to integrate the cases. Ms. Castile is always rated as exceptional by her staff and her annual performance appraisals by her chief deputy. Two top qualities to describe Ms. Castile is hardworking and supportive of her team. Congratulations, Ms. Castile. Our second nominee comes from Information Services and is Tara Chris. Ms. Chris, would you please come forward? Ms. Chris serves as the Technology Services Manager for Information Services. She was nominated for the award based on her leadership and support of the countywide implementation of the new performance management system. A project initiated in 2021 by the county manager to enhance and improve our existing performance management process and provide a more granular appraisal process in hopes of eventually moving to a true performance-based merit process. Tara has led this project with persistence, patience, and grace to ensure timeliness were met and the vision of our county manager was achieved. Congratulations, Ms. Chris, on your nomination. Our third nominee is from Human Resources Department, Ms. Glenda Valentine. Ms. Valentine served as interim Director of Human Resources for almost one year and during that time supported staff and demonstrated the leadership needed to guide the department through the traditional period after the retirement of the former director of 20 years. Soon after, she was promoted to Deputy Director of Human Resources. Ms. Valentine provided guidance and oversight for the Evergreen Class and Pace Study. She also supports Cobb County by providing leadership, advancement to county-wide programs, projects such as Performance Management System, Succession Planning, Customer Service Initiatives, Suggestion Incentive Program, Employee Appreciation Day, ESP, Excel, and always has been a guide to the Excel alumni by providing a wealth of information to assist us. Thank you again, Ms. Valentine. Our final nominee is from the library system and is Sloane Williams. Ms. Williams, would you please come up? Ms. Williams currently serves as the Communications Community and User Engagement Manager for the Cobb Library System. Ms. Williams is responsible for overseeing outreach services, marketing and communications, and virtual services for the Cobb County Public Library System. She received the 2021 Team Award for Cobb County Library's 2020 Census Initiative, presented by the Georgia Library Association. In 2022, Ms. Williams developed and implemented the Cobb Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship, a virtual incubator inspired by Commissioner Jerika Richardson. Ms. Williams loves serving her community and utilizing her skills for the betterment of the community. She offered pro bono services to the Cobb Library Foundation. The foundation is a non-for-profit, tax-exempt organization that provides support to the Cobb County Public Library System by raising funds and seeking other contributions from the community and business partnerships. Please give a round of applause to all of our nominees. Cobb County is fortunate to have great leadership at every level. Each year, it gets harder and harder to decide a winner for these because it's so much that they do and so much time that they give to their department and to the community. Will all nominees please come forward and we're going to announce the winner. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me also acknowledge Martha Loog's daughter is here, Sarah Loog. Ms. Lo, would you please stand? Would you come forward? Ms. Lo, would you come forward so that you can get in the picture? And this year's winner of the 2023 Martha Loog Excellence Leadership Award goes to Kristi Castile. Congratulations, Ms. Castile. At this time, we will turn it over to County Manager Dr. Jackie McMorris.
Good morning. My heart is filled right now because I know the work that you guys put into what you do every single day across the county. It is with great pleasure and honor to stand here and say I'm so proud of each and every one of you and even more related that I did not have to choose. It is so rewarding to know that these are just four of so many of our employees who exemplify leadership, commitment, dedication, determination to making sure that we serve our residents and our citizens and visitors with excellence. And you have exemplified that. So let's give them a round of applause once again and congratulations. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Okay, we are now at our public hearing tab. Our first public hearing is to conduct a public hearing for the employment of consultant services where contract fees will likely exceed $100,000. And I believe our county manager will be presenting this item.
Good morning, Chairwoman and Commissioners. State law requires that local governments in each county develop a service delivery strategy as outlined in House Bill 489. This is intended to assist in the planning process to implement service delivery that does several things. One, reduces unnecessary duplication, promotes cooperation between the cities and the county, eliminates funding inequities and
eliminates funding inequities, and minimizes inter-jurisdictional land disputes. We are required to renew the SDS every 10 years and our next renewal cycle is October 31st of 2024. A request for proposals has been issued and this will assist the county and all our cities with the identification of services that we each provide, those service areas, and the funding to help us negotiate and reach an agreement on the updated strategy. It is anticipated that this contract may exceed $100,000 over the entire contract term and thus it is required that the Board of Commissioners authorize and conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000. So at this time, Chairwoman, I would ask that the public hearing be opened.
Thank you, Dr. McMorris. For our public hearing, we'll let an unlimited number of speakers address this matter and this matter only for a maximum of three minutes. And again, this pertains to our service delivery strategy with our cities. Our public hearing is open for anyone who desires to speak. Yes.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners. It's probably just sound like a broken record. Again, a couple of points. One is it's going to be around $100,000. So we don't know if that's $100,000 or $200,000. And also is we have a robust HR department. We have robust employees. And I am taken aback every time we have to reach out to professionals to tell us what to do. And at a minimum, I would imagine that you could at least have everything done and have somebody bless it for under $100K. I'm just saying. And if not, then maybe we need to hire different people so that we don't have to... I'm in Cobb 101. I understand that the salaries are lower when you work for the county or a city than it is if you worked for the private sector. So instead of spending millions on all these consultants, why don't we have some like core, really good people in that we don't have to frivolously spend taxpayer dollars? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take our next speaker. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions for our county manager?
Hey, Jackie. Just can we clarify a little bit? I know the last consultant that we had for SDFs was significantly less than $100,000. So you're nodding your head that's correct. But then also, there is an agreement between the six cities to help share this cost.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and the reason why the county is putting this bid out is because that was an agreement that we would take the lead on it with the six cities' support, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Did I miss anything that we need to fill in?
No, ma'am. The study that you're referring to, that study was only looking at the county's data and our latest audit. So it was significantly less because it only looked at the county's data and it did not include our six cities.
And then again, just to clarify for the public, the cities are going to be helping absorb this fee for this consultant to come in.
Exactly. And the actual contract will come back before the board to approve and at that time, you will know the exact amount.
Thank you. Did I see another hand? You're good? Okay, thank you, Dr. McMorris.
Thank you.
We'll now go to our next public hearing, which is with respect to the South Cobb Water Reclamation Facility. And that will be brought by our Water Systems Director.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. The water system requests the Board of Commissioners to hold a public hearing for employment of consultant services where contract fees will likely exceed $100,000 for our South Cobb Water Reclamation Facility Primary Clarifier Rehabilitation and Biosolids Thicken Program. This project entails the design of rehabilitating our primary clarifiers and the design of new thickening systems.
Thank you. Again, similar to the format of the prior public hearing, we'll allow an unlimited number of speakers to address this matter and this matter only for a maximum of three minutes. Those of you who'd like to address this matter can please step forward. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Denny Wilson. I'm a resident of District 4 here in Cobb, 40-year resident. So is this what the increase in the water bill that, I mean, the water payments that we got, is this what this is all about? Because we got an increase in our water bill, I believe, in 2018. And then we just got another increase last week, last month, when you guys did a proposal to increase the water bill. I think they said by $5 and something or something like that. Why are we continuously getting these increases in our water bill? Because along with the water, you know, goes sewage as well. So how many more increases do you guys plan to put on us? I mean, before you finally say, you know, that this is enough? And I understand that this 2018 increase was done before three of you guys were voted onto the board. But I still say, you know, how many more times are you guys are going to continue to increase our water? Because it seems like it's like every two, three years that we're getting an increase. And you guys sit there and you say, oh, well, it's only $5. But $5 could mean the difference between somebody paying their rent or somebody buying food or somebody buying medicine. I mean, you've timed that five times 12. And that could be a big difference in a household. So I'm just saying, hey, I mean, we got to stop somewhere. I mean, you know, we got a huge property tax increase. Now we get a water increase. And now, you know, you come to us with a proposal for a facility that I guess I should have done my research because I don't know anything about it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to participate in this public hearing? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Do any Commissioners have any questions for our Director? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Judy, is this related to the failure that we had here?
No, it is not. This is needed to ensure that this facility continues to operate properly and to treat wastewater to the standards that we are required by the state to treat and to discharge wastewater. So it's not related to that.
Okay, and this is the only wastewater treatment plant in the county that we're using this program for?
We have four wastewater treatment plants. There are various projects going on at each plant. It just depends on, you know, where each plant is, what facilities are, you know, the age of each process within the plant, and determining which things need to be upgraded at which plant at which time. So at South Cobb, these are some of the things that need to be done. We have quite a few projects scheduled at South Cobb. That's actually our oldest wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, and has this gone out to bid?
No, this is just to start the design of this project. So it'll have to take a while to get it designed and contract documents put together before we can put it out to bid.
Okay, and it'll come back to us for approval?
Yes, so the design contract will come back for approval and then the construction contract will come back separately for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Judy, good morning. Would you mind just addressing the concern or the question as to whether or not the taxes, I'm sorry, that the water rate increases in direct correlation with this agenda item?
So our water rate increases are required because we keep having increases in operating costs and increases in construction costs. So part of the increase will go to fund capital projects like this, but part of it will also go to include, to fund our increased cost to purchase water to provide because we purchase water from another entity and their costs go up each year, and just our operating costs to run the plants. Our chemical costs are going up. Our chemical costs have gone up 30% to 50% in the last two years. Our electrical costs are going up. So all of our costs just to run the plants are going up.
Okay, thanks.
And just to ask as well, because I know I looked at the numbers on the transfer versus the rates. Our efforts in reducing the transfer to the general fund, that does alleviate some burden. It's not the full burden, but the idea is that it alleviates some burden on the water budget.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Commissioners? I do serve on the Water Authority, which provides or sells water to the county. And similar to what our Director shared, the costs of providing water continue to increase, whether it's from the physical infrastructure or in the changing standards of how water is treated and provided. The cost of chemicals to treat water continues to go up in addition to other inflationary costs. Standards are also getting more strict at the federal level. And I can tell you, I don't anticipate anytime soon that the cost is going to wane for our water. In fact, with the increases I'm seeing, I'd hate to share, but I anticipate that our costs may continue to increase as there may be systems that even ultimately may need to be retrofitted to comply with new standards. This is something that we are not doing in a vacuum. Certainly, there's always a mindfulness towards the end user and the cost impact. But I think there's also a concern that there's a greater health impact if the Water Authority does not get it right in providing the water that you expect to come out of your tap of the taste and quality and odor that you expect from any municipal service. With that, thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I believe that concludes our public hearings for today. We will now move to our consent agenda. And these items on the... Excuse me, I always seem to miss over public comment. I don't know why. We're going to go to our first public comment before we go to our consent agenda. And just want to alert Commissioners that there is a matter that has already been brought to my attention to move from the consent agenda with respect to the Hawthorne matter. So please anticipate that we will vote to move that from consent.
As the Board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. Excuse me, please state your name and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization. All comments should be addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. The comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous. To that end, the Board encourages, regardless of the topic, for audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and be heard by treating each other's with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration of Cobb County government. And there is a timer on the podium to keep track of your five minutes. The first public speaker is Richard Groome.
Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, my name is Richard Groome. I am President of East Cobb Civic Association. The Board of Directors of East Cobb Civic Association wrote to you on July 14th expressing our comments concerning the Cobb County Strategic Plan 2023-2028 and with recommendations that the consultants addressed prior to the county's acceptance of the proposed plan. We have submitted a copy of this letter to you again today. The basic issues we have with the proposed five-year strategic plan are that the plan presents a very general, broad range of goals, but no detailed, specific actions which are key to accountability in a five-year strategic plan. This plan is more consistent with a long-range concept plan. ECCA recommends that the following must be included to make the plan meaningful and useful as a county management tool. The plan must have specific measurable goals with benchmarks for measuring progress, maximum timelines to completion for each specific goal, the source of revenue to finance each specific project, specific resources identified to achieve each specific goal, including who will do the work, staff, outside contractors, or a mix. The plan must set priorities in order of importance for projects with each strategic outcome area. All projects should not be treated as equal. The plan should contain a statement as to the reality of achieving each goal within a five-year timeframe. There should be provisions for an annual progress report on a project-by-project basis. There should be provision for a final analysis of the achievements after five years. One example of such a plan is the Leon County, Florida Fiscal Year 2022-2026 Strategic Plan. While it may not be perfect, it is actionable. It contains many of the above elements with specific goals that are achievable, measurable, and accountable. East Cobb Civic Association believes this five-year strategic plan should be a strategic roadmap for the county to help the county set and better achieve its goals, to describe these goals to its constituents and potential commercial investors, and to communicate to its constituents how the county will measure the accomplishments of these goals. ECCA believes that an explanation needs to be included in the proposed five-year strategic plan as to how the plan relates to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan in its five-years updates. Is this a supplemental plan to the Comprehensive Plan? Which I believe it is. It should be spelled out early in the five-year strategic plan document so we know where it fits and how it supports the Comprehensive Plan. ECC recognizes that anyone can raise a problem or criticize a plan. It's finding a solution that is difficult. The ECCA's letter lists several additional general recommendations that range from the consultants proofreading the proposed plan to defining certain terms and specific recommendations under the various outcome areas that range from moving street lighting to a different subsection to including the Cobb County cities within the county's goals in any county housing initiative. In summary, ECCA supports strategic planning and goal-setting for Cobb County, but would like to see less generalities and a more specific, targeted, measurable, and accountable plan. We understand that this is not an easy task. Frankly, we are not impressed with the product the consultants have come up with so far and we are concerned that the county is not getting its money's worth. We recommend that the proposed Cobb County Strategic Plan 2023-2028 be sent back to the consultants for further work, that a revised plan includes specific targets and goals with cost estimates, timelines that are achievable, milestones that are measurable, and management that is held accountable for the results. Then after five years, we can celebrate our successes. Thank you for your attention.
The next speaker is George, I can't read the last name. Is it Ernestine? Ernestine.
Thank you for your time this morning. I'm here with my wife, Ginny Catalina. We live at 471 Alcott in Smyrna. It is Cobb County.
May you state your name once again for the record, please?
George Ernestine.
Thank you, George.
Like Washington. I believe, Mrs. Sheffield, you're my Commissioner in my district. So I have talked to your people at your office. So we may be able to talk later. But the reason we're here today is because we have a situation in our neighborhood. I've tried to do some things about it. Unfortunately, the code as it stands right now does not cover this issue. I spoke to the day watch commander at the sheriff's office about this. Very nice guy, Officer Shinholder. Also talked to the head of code, Brent Farrell, another really nice guy. He asked me to call some other people, which I did. The code as it stands right now in Cobb County does not cover excessive lighting. We have a situation where a neighbor has put up floodlights all around his house and they're shining in our backyard and lighting up like six flags. In addition to that, In addition to that, he has a camera, a doorbell camera on the back of his house, which spies directly into my backyard. This young lady doesn't feel comfortable going out in her bathing suit in the backyard, and it's created a great deal of trouble. We attempted to go speak to the neighbor who speaks Spanish. Catalina, my wife, is bilingual. I went up and tried to talk to the son who does speak English, and that didn't work out either. So what we're proposing is that we look at the code and try to include in it what my recommendation is to the commission, is we add excessive or invasive lighting to the code. That particularly means excessive lighting means things like floodlights. And these floodlights, I believe there's, they're on all sides of the house, they're on the corners, in the middle.
There's six.
There's six?
Three in the back, two in front.
Okay, but they're double, so that's, I guess, 12. And with regard to doorbell cameras, obviously, we need those on the front for security. People, a lot of people, of course, UPS, FedEx, and every other commercial enterprise I can think of, DoorDash and so forth are constantly in my neighborhood, which, you know, is a part of the way life's changing. When I moved in that neighborhood, we've lived there 35 years in the same house, I've been married to her for 46, I'm kind of a boring kind of guy. You know, nothing goes exciting, and I don't like excitement, and she particularly doesn't like excitement. So if mama's not happy, nobody's happy. So I hope that we'll be able to get you to get involved in this. I'll just leave you with this. Some years ago, I contacted my commissioner. We had a, we had an individual, the houses in our neighborhood are not really fancy, I call them starter homes, they're small homes. We had a small family, we didn't see a sense of getting a big home, liked to spend money on other things, or have to spend money on other things. So I noticed one afternoon them washing children out in the back, I smelled the kerosene. Well, in the old days, people had bedbugs and lice, and the poor people actually...
Fifty-five seconds.
Okay. I'm getting caught, I get verbose sometimes. But anyway, they were washing the children out in the back in kerosene. They were building stalls in the basement. It was going to be a boarding house. The property values, I wouldn't have been able to give away my house. So I contacted the sheriff's office and my commissioner, and I was quite upset about it, and I told him we had to do something about this. And I wasn't very polite about it, to be real honest, but it heads with the sheriff a little bit at that time, probably not the sheriff anymore. But anyway, I told him what I would do if he didn't do something, and he didn't like that. So it ended up...
Sir, I'm sorry you're five minutes away.
Okay.
Thank you.
It was solved.
The next speaker is, is it Jeremy Ernestine? Ernestine?
You speak to me, sir.
The next signed-up speaker, is it Ginny Ernestine?
Yes.
Okay.
She was here.
Okay, with you, okay. And the next one's Christine Rosman?
Hello again, Christine Rosman, and I'm in the city of Marietta. And I saw that the Cobb line, and I've heard already that the Cobb County has maintained its AAA rating, which is great, however, our country has not, and our country's rating has gone down to a AA, which I'm assuming is going to have an impact and have a trickle-down impact, which will include all of us, everyone. It's going to impact all of us with higher rates, higher interest rates, which again will have a trickle-down effect. And just hearing the Cobb employee talking about the water treatment plant, and then hearing that, you know, there's inflation, Commissioner, or Chairwoman, just saying that everything is going up in price, that the chemicals are going up in price, water's going up in price, everything's going up in price, and so are everything for everybody, our groceries, the gas pump. And I think it got summed up nicely about last month's meeting about the tax increases. The Cobb Republican Assembly wrote a nice piece. Many of the homeowners demonstrated how significantly their property tax bill has increased and explained how higher taxes harms their family. One gentleman asked the board, what should we cut from our budget? Should we turn off the AC in the summer and our heat in the winter? Should people turn their pets into the county shelter because they can no longer afford it? Should we drive on bald tires? Should we stop buying presents for our children and grandchildren? Please let me and the thousands of other homeowners know what we should cut in order to pay for this tax increase. I'm taken aback how, there's that quote, "Your actions speak so loudly I can't hear what you're saying." If you're saying how much you embrace all of Cobb County, that means all of Cobb County. That means when somebody is working several jobs and has daycare. That means when a senior is on a fixed income. That means when a disabled person is on a fixed income. Everything is rising around us, and you had the opportunity, and you chose not to act on it, to reduce our mileage rate. And that is taking a big punch to Cobb County, and it's just getting worse, and then you're going to come back, I guess it's at our next election, and say, oh, now we need to raise our taxes from 6% sales tax in Cobb County to 8% so we can start funding MARTA coming into Cobb County, and expand that. And where does it stop? Where does this spending stop? I mean, at some point, you've got to rein it in. I'm a huge Aldis, however you say his name, Aldis Huxley, and a big fan of his. So I'm just going to read this one quote, "There will be, in the next generation or so," and by the way, he died in 1963, so this is over 60 years old, this quote, "In the next generation or so, a pharmaceutical logical method of making people love their servitude and producing dictatorship without tears, so to speak, producing a kind of painless concentration camp for entire societies, so that people will, in fact, have their liberties taken away from them, but will rather enjoy it because they will be distracted from any desire to rebel by propaganda or brainwashing, or brainwashing enhanced by pharmacological methods. And this seems to be the final revolution." And I think we're at that tipping point right now where we are taxed so much, and taxation without representation, and all the giveaways in the world are making us slaves. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Denny Wilson.
Again, Denny Wilson, District 4, South Cobb. I'm probably going to say some things here today that's going to be very uneasy for some people, but it's things that need to be said. When I attended the Board of Commissioners meeting last month, the seven o'clock meeting where you guys voted to not roll back the mileage rate, I requested that you not increase the taxes on the senior citizens, because many of them, as I have told you guys many, many times before, they're eating their medicine as food. You have some of them who are breaking pills in half to make a 30-month supply, because they cannot afford to buy a whole month's supply of their medicine. And I get calls from them saying, even after this meeting last month, well, Denny, what am I going to do? There's a chance that I may be, I may have to sell my house. I may have to go live with my children. I mean, because I don't have any other alternatives because I'm on a fixed income. But you guys didn't take that into consideration when you cast your vote last month. We were dressed down by a sitting commissioner. I mean, I even had to look down at myself to make sure that I still had my clothes on, because never in my life have I been talked to like we were talked to in here last month about this tax increase. Then you deflect it to the school board. But what you didn't tell the people in the room is that, yes, the school board has a billion-dollar budget, and so does Cobb County now, but the school board has three times the employees that you guys have, and the school board don't have the retention problems that you guys have. And the school board is responsible for the education of our children. They're responsible for the education of the leaders of tomorrow, leaders who probably look up to you to be like you. So I think to deflect to the school board, it just wasn't becoming of you guys, because you've got to compare the difference between the two. Now, I live in South Cobb, and I've lived in South Cobb most all of my time here in Cobb County. I educated my children in Cobb County Public Schools, Riverside Elementary, Lindley Middle School, all the way to Pebblebrook High School. I was very involved with the education of my children, more so with now with the education of my grandchildren. I worked until full social security age, which was 66 in four months. I would turn 67 years old this year, and I worked to secure a future for myself. I bought a home in a community that I love, and I don't plan to leave there unless you guys continue to raise these taxes, and I'm forced to have to sell it in order to leave. I also brought some pictures in this morning, because I want to show you guys some things that are going on just on my street. The previous commissioner put in a project for us to have sidewalks, and I was so excited. I mean, I've been excited from the day that I found out that we were getting sidewalks on both sides. She and I kind of had a part in of the way, so she took the sidewalks off my side of the street, but she left them on the other side. So then I had to look at the greater good in the situation, because what I told myself, and after I calmed down from being so furious until I didn't know what to do, I told myself, hey, well, look at the greater good, at least you got them on one side, so you'll still be able to walk your street. So now the existing commissioner comes in and they start the project for the sidewalks. Can I do the microfilm? This is what I have to walk out my door and look at every day. That's one of the pictures. This is what's stacked up on the side of the road where we can't even come down the street. I mean, you're walking in mush and pine straw and dirt and mud, and this is another one. This is where they dug up a tree and just left the stump on the side of the road, so it's just sitting there. And this is another one. I mean, I just want you to see what we're having to look at every day that we...
Ms. Wilson, your five minutes are up. The next speaker is Craig Harfoot.
As our next speaker comes up, I'd like for DOT to talk to Ms. Wilson, as there have been some very unique challenges with this project that have been brought to the attention of the full board, and so we just want to make sure that you have some timely awareness of what's going on. I'd hate to have anyone have a perception that I'm imbued with any more authority than what I do have with determining what side of the street sidewalks go on or what's removed. I assure you, that is not something that I would do personally, and the unfortunate matter is that our cost of sidewalks are extremely great. I believe it's like 1.2 million per mile, and so the demand certainly has stripped our resources, and I want you to be aware that we are very grateful, I'm very grateful that you do have this project on your street, because there's so many streets that don't have sidewalks at all. But the way that this project is going has not been acceptable to us, and I just want to make sure our staff is apprising you of what's going on, so that you're aware, and we can do our best to make sure it's maintained as best as we can considering the circumstances. Commissioner, if you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to add with respect to the sidewalk. The sidewalk is not going on that side of the street because there were challenges with the utility company, and challenges with removing or relocating the poles, so it's not something that was done intentionally, it's just not, it just wasn't, it just wasn't conducive with respect to moving the utility lines.
Thank you, Commissioner. May I go ahead, sir?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Craig Harfoot, and first I wanted to tag on to something about Mr. Huxley's quote. I watched the Jesus Revolution last night on Netflix. I lived through that. It was over by '71, about the time, well, what I need to say is that it was like the evangelization of the hippies that had taken the drugs that Timothy Leary and the US government through MKUltra, you know, they were just experimenting back then. And it was a story of a guy that found redemption, and then started, God, some, several of the mega churches in Southern California. But anyhow, the thing is, it was over as soon as the cocaine started flowing into our country. The revolution ends in '71, and that's when the cocaine comes, and then it goes to crack, then it goes to methamphetamines, they're product of IG Farben after World War II. We didn't bomb that place, by the way, should have. And that just ties into the drugging of America. Well, you're just doing this waste treatment plant. Well, none of the waste treatment plants get out the pharma, the forever pharma, in the water. So whatever people take and pee in the toilets, and then we pipe into the river, treat it or not, ends up in the ecosystem. The worst thing, and I was against this back when Sam Olins was in, and it's why I was against Roy Barnes for piping everything after the Olympics to just blow up construction in the south, and that's what they did. But it's as bad as when the Romans built aqueducts to do their cities and lined them with lead. It was the fall of the empire, just on that one thing. And the pharma in the water, it's, it's really bad. I mean, they find it in the Gulf of Mexico in bonefish, red fish. Years back, they found Prozac in fish in Texas rivers. So Huxley was pretty right dead on, but it was government action that created all this. And I've been talking to people in the grocery stores, the post office, you know, just conversation. Doesn't matter what color they are, what race they are, and we talk about, well, I bring up, you know, the, you know, how the response of the board to the public talking about the tax increase. And they basically say, well, politicians, they just care about themselves, they don't care about anybody else. And I had a different take on it, and it was like, when I ran, I knew how to win, I knew where the money was, I even had people tell me, come see them if I wanted to run. Well, that wasn't me, because it's the same deal that Christ... Well, that wasn't me because it's the same deal that Christ, that Satan tempted Christ in the wilderness. Fall down, worship me, I'll give you the great cities and the money and all this. Well, that's what our whole political system in the United States is based on. Whoever has the most money wins. Except in the case of Roy Barnes, and that's because he passed the predatory lending law. The banks got behind the scenes and got Sunny to win with $500,000 against 22 million. So as soon as he got in, he raised the predatory lending law. And it goes back to, so Sam and everybody else, they build up Cobb. And the more people you put in this county, the more the services go up. But this printing press, I've sent you all tons of material on economics. I hope you read them. But the biggest thing is, oh, the 40% of what, my housing's unaffordable? Because Wall Street got cheap money, bought up all the cheap assets after 2008, and Blackstone and others bought these things up. And then everybody's a tenant, and they were just pass the taxes on, it's not affordable. And I hope, just read what I sent you. And when you understand that, and if you care about anybody, you'll actually see a way to do something. Thank you.
That was our final speaker for the first section.
Thank you. We are now at our consent agenda, and those items were scrolling on the screen prior to this meeting, and we'll do so at the conclusion of our meeting. As I shared, there is one agenda item that I know has been brought to my attention yesterday and today that we may need to have discussion on, and so it would be my ask that we pull that item from consent. And Commissioner Richardson, if you can provide that number, we can-
Item number 10.
Okay. We'll go ahead and just pull number 10 for discussion, and no vote is needed to pull an item from consent. Yes, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, I've submitted my statement to the clerk.
Thank you, Commissioner. I perceive you did too as well, Commissioner Gambro.
No, I was waiting for a discussion before I entered it in, but I can go ahead and do it now. If the clerk would please record my statement as shown on page 139 of the current agenda. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments? Well, I'll go ahead and take a motion to approve the consent agenda as it has been revised and to authorize execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second and discussion.
I need to take a motion first. I didn't move. I didn't move. I said I'll take a motion.
So moved.
We had a second without a motion.
Go ahead.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second and discussion.
Thank you, go ahead.
I would just like to, for the record, oppose item number 14 and 19.
Okay, number 14 pertains to an agreement between Cobb Public Library and the Department of Juvenile Justice. And what was the other number, Commissioner?
19.
19. That's to approve revision of the no harassment, no discrimination policy. Okay, are there any other comments? Yes, Commissioner.
And I'd also like it recorded that I'm opposed to item number 14 and also agenda item number 19.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? Oh, I will call the question. Okay, the motion carries 5-0, again, recognizing that both Commissioners Burrell and Gambro oppose agenda items 14 and 19. With that, when we pull a matter off of consent, that is the first matter that we hear when we conclude the consent agenda. So we will now go back to consent agenda item number 10, which pertains to approving amendment number one to an operating agreement with Hawthorne Global Aviation Centers regarding construction of a new terminal facility at Cobb County International Airport.
Good morning, Chairwoman Commissioners, County Manager. By way of background, on May 10th, 2022, the Board of Commissioners authorized termination of the existing North and South fixed-based operator leases with Hawthorne Global Aviation Services. The Board also approved a new 35-year term amended, restated, and consolidated lease and operating agreement to include two five-year renewal options with Hawthorne for continued fixed-based operator service at Cobb County International Airport, McCollum Field. Amendment number one that is being presented today requires Hawthorne to construct a number of improvements throughout the site of the airport to include a new terminal facility as well as 65,000 square feet of hangar space. With that, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners approve amendment number one to the amended, restated, and consolidated lease and operating agreement with Hawthorne Global Aviation Services LLC regarding the construction of a new terminal facility at Cobb County International Airport, McCollum Field, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you, Drew. I'll move for that we approve this matter for purposes of discussion. There were seconds?
So moved.
Sorry. All right, and discussion? Okay, Commissioner Burrell, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Drew. I sit on the advisory board for the airport, thanks to the Chairwoman's appointment. I have for years, and it is currently in my district. We had some concerns from some of the hangar owners, property owners at the airport that sublease from Hawthorne. I've spoken with Carl and you yesterday about it. Carl and I and the Hawthorne manager, Kelly Dennison, after our advisory board meeting yesterday afternoon contacted one of the owners that was concerned that they think that Hawthorne can just do away with their lease. Our lease with Hawthorne is between the county and Hawthorne. And Drew, correct me or interject if there's anything I'm saying that's not completely accurate. And the subleases are between the hangar owners and the pilots or whoever and Hawthorne. So we actually spoke with Larry Thompson, who has a sublease with Hawthorne. And he is very, was very concerned from that he, you know, was not protected with his lease and property that he has acquired there. So Hawthorne specifically said nothing is changing with the leases. They're not, this is not going to interfere with any of the leases, the subleases. But another hangar owner, Thomas Huff, wanted language in this agreement that they would be protected. However, legally, we can't do that because the subleases are with Hawthorne, not us. But Hawthorne has said there's, nothing is going to change. So I don't think legally we can add any language here, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, because of the way the agreement is. And the other thing I'd like to point out that this is a project that Hawthorne is undertaking. There's no county funding coming into this. So I support it, and, you know, if you have anything to add or the county attorney, I'd appreciate it.
Just by way of background, I'd love to use this opportunity to talk a little bit about the airport and how the airport is structured. The airport, in terms of DOT staff, has less than half a dozen Cobb County employees out there to manage a significant amount of acreage and facilities throughout. In order to appropriately manage those facilities, the staff enters into a contract with a fixed-based operator. That is Hawthorne, just as you mentioned. And they are the ones that manage the leases and the rents for all of the hangar space and various facilities throughout the site. And they have been for a number of years, and it's mutually beneficial. They're able to operate it as a business. The county is able to limit the amount of staff that's actually associated with the airport. And in terms of funding, both for this amendment as well as the airport in general, the airport is completely self-sufficient. So there are no general funds that come into the airport to support the operations. We do have a number of federal grants that come in, but in terms of county funds, the airport is self-sufficient because of the model of operations with the fixed-based operator operating out there. Now, in terms of hangar space, we are 100% occupied, as are most airports throughout the metro Atlanta region, the general aviation airports throughout the region. So with this lease restatement, excuse me, the original amended, restated, and consolidated lease back to May 10th of 2022, hangar improvements were something that were looked at because of the lack of space, lack of available space for someone that does want to come in, relocate a business here, and operate a private jet out of the airport. Now, with that, as Hawthorne has had some new leadership, they've also looked at the terminal facility and identified that as an area that needs some improvement and needs some adjustment here. So what the amendment does is it allows for the construction of additional hangar space as well as reconstruction of the terminal, all at Hawthorne's expense. And the timeline, the extended timeline of the original reconsolidated lease allows for the amortization of those improvements provided by Hawthorne. And that's, again, something that's mutually beneficial, beneficial for their business as well as for the airport of being able to continue to attract clients, which really ultimately means attract new business to Cobb County. Now, in terms of what you asked about the subleases, you are absolutely correct. Our agreement is between Cobb County and Hawthorne. Any subleases thereto are really between Hawthorne and those subleases. Now, when the amendment or the amended, restated, consolidated lease was brought forward, anything that was in the previous lease carried forward into the new lease. And whatever agreements are in place between Hawthorne and their subleases remains intact both through that restatement as well as now. And what Hawthorne's responsibility is, is any open leases, they need to continue to honor those. And if Hawthorne desires in their business to try to modify those, that has to be mutually beneficial or mutually agreed upon between Hawthorne and their subleases.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Gambro.
Hey, Drew, so I've been spending the last couple hours learning about, more in depth about the airport. So the concern is, is we've got others that have invested in the airport and had a financial investment, and I'm assuming that financial investment was done between an agreement with those individuals and the county. So the concern is, is with doing this agreement with Hawthorne, would it negate those agreements that these other individuals have made investment-wise with the county to be at the airport? Does this impact their investment and their agreements that they've had with the county?
It would not. Any agreements between the county and outside third parties are not adjusted by this. This is just looking at those areas that are controlled by Hawthorne. So any previous agreements, any previous investments made by other parties remain intact.
So is there any document, because I know yesterday we were talking about the circle in the agenda item and that this agreement only pertain to this circle. So is, my understanding is Hawthorne's running the entire airport, except we have six employees. So is Hawthorne's authority to make agreements or sublease agreements only contained to that circle, or does it expand the whole airport?
Neither. Hawthorne controls, through our contract, controls a significant portion of the airport facility or square footage. It does not control 100% of the airport. So of the area that Hawthorne controls, Hawthorne has the ability to sublease those facilities out as needed.
So would another entity, say like Fuel, would they be able to come in and sell fuel, or is that something that we've delegated just to Hawthorne, the authority to do on-site?
The, I'd have to check with Carl to confirm this, but in terms of the facilities that Hawthorne controls, they're able to manage fuel sales through that. Some of the other areas, I'm uncertain if there is the infrastructure available for that, but I can check on that and follow back up.
Yes, Commissioner.
And I certainly had to speak with an individual as well that has an interest in the airport and actually read each line of the amendment and including the portion that says all other agreements are in place. And that it appeared as though the language of the contract does not grant any new authority to Hawthorne. The only thing it does is modifies the scope of the project in terms of the hangar space.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner?
If we can just have Bill, the attorney, just to kind of summarize here that this is an agreement between county and Hawthorne, and the county does not have any power or any jurisdiction to negotiate or make promises or anything along that lines with the leases.
I second that.
That's it? Okay.
What you just said is absolutely correct. And I assume that the portion that Commissioner Richardson was just referring to was found in paragraph numbered four, which everything else shall remain the same unchanged except as specifically provided for. And those leases would have negotiated those contracts, those leases with Hawthorne, and they're under those terms, so.
Thanks. Okay, thank you for our staff for addressing the concerns, and thank you to our commissioners for addressing the concerns of the business leaders who are out on the property. It's all of them working together that has helped to make that site as impressive as it has been with the economic benefit that we've had and with the support that is provided for our business community. With this vote today, we are hoping to support improvement, which is going to continue to add value to the site. There was one question shared with me by a business owner, and perhaps this is a conversation that can take place with staff, but a questioning of whether Hawthorne has too much autonomy or authority on our site and whether or not this is comparable to how other airports operate. So this could be a conversation we can have, but if persons have, would you like to answer it now?
I'd be glad to address it, at least in part, and it's something we're certainly open to the conversation in understanding that the history of the airport, at one point, there was a contract for the North FBO and a South FBO, and those were operated independently and provided-
Clarify those acronyms.
Of course, fixed-based operator. So there was a Hawthorne, just for sake of the conversation, on the North and another company similar to a Hawthorne on the South. So the runway runs east-west, the North properties were under one fixed-based operator, the South properties were under a separate fixed-based operator. And the advantage of that is it does provide some competition internal to the airport that it's able to keep rents in check, things like that. The disadvantage is during the recession, the South FBO, fixed-based operator, began to go under and ended up going bankrupt. And so having the division of facilities there really led to inefficiencies in being able to make the airport everything that it could be. And so by combining it into one, which really happened organically because there was a purchase that happened to bring that all under one umbrella. It provides for consistency in terms of the operations of the airport's primary facilities. And then in terms of competition, the advantage that I spoke of earlier, there's regional competition. So there's PDK, there's Charlie Brown, there's Gwinnett's Airport. So there are other facilities that do provide the regional competition, so there are some options there. Having it under one umbrella FBO, again, provides that consistency and efficacy in the operations.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Of course.
Okay, now I see two additions. Hands up. I'll go with the one who has their mic on, and then we'll come to Commissioner Gambro.
And that was just consolidated last year? Or May of '22, they all came under the one umbrella?
No, ma'am, I can find the date for that. That was sometime around the recession, so it's probably 10 plus or minus years ago.
But it wasn't Hawthorne, man.
The consolidation that's talked about in the agenda item is consolidation of lease amendments. So as a lease- So as a lease, a lease with age just matures through its normal lifespan, we're regularly coming back for amendments to do, just like we're doing here, to do various improvements throughout the side. What the consolidated lease did was said basically any previous agreements that are under the current lease were all tied up into one document so that we're not chasing down different amendments to try to understand the full scope of what the agreement entails between us and Hawthorne.
Okay. Commissioner Gambrell. Okay, just one moment, Commissioner. If we can address someone's phone that's in the audience, or the individual can step out, can you step outside with that device? Okay, thank you.
Hey Drew, okay, and again, trying to piece things together. So how did we come upon Hawthorne doing all of these improvements? Because it's my understanding that several years ago, another entity brought forth a proposal, and it sounds like it might have been these FBOs that you were talking about for the North and the South, yet it was never brought before the board for consideration. So how do we ensure, and again, does this go back to our purchasing policy, that, you know, if individuals are wanting to invest in our airport and do improvements, that they have an equal opportunity to present to the board and have those considerations, you know, considered? How did we settle on Hawthorne? Was there an RFP process? Did they go through a bid process? How did we get to here today? Because, again, others are concerned that Hawthorne is kind of taking, you know, over or is going to, you know, control the airport and push everybody else out and not give others the opportunity to invest in the airport that have tried to and have in the past.
Of course. So I'd be glad to provide the lengthy history of kind of how we got to where we are in terms of our current agreement with Hawthorne. It's a number of lease amendments that have included property enhancements. We can provide that history. In terms of other lease proposals, or where someone is looking to invest in the airport and then potentially extend out their lease, we're glad to have those conversations. This does not prohibit that. This really just looks at existing space to make those improvements. So as there are other proposals, we'd be glad to have those conversations in coordination with the board and those interested parties.
Okay, because I know the one that I'm aware of, you know, was even going to be building another fire station for our station that is located just across the street, and now I understand that that's kind of off the table, which I don't understand because we're storing equipment in a hangar that we could then be having planes in. So I guess I just don't understand how that didn't get brought before the board for consideration, and it was pretty much stopped before the board even was aware of it.
Okay. I'd be glad to find the details of that and bring the full board up to speed. I don't have that in front of me, but I'd be glad to find the details on that and brief the board. But it is outside of this particular agenda.
I'm going to have our county attorney or county manager weigh in on a couple of remarks. One, a possible perception that we would bring in someone to operate the airport without having board approval of that matter. From what I heard from Drew, this is something that took place about a decade or so ago, and what I'm hearing from Commissioner Gambrell is that it's something more perceived to be more recent. I can't, I can't speak to me observing anything more recent for Hawthorne to consolidate both of those sides, but I just ask for someone to weigh in on that. And then also with respect to the other aspects of the operation and bringing that to the attention of the board.
I can just say this without going into a lot of detail. This staff has always followed the county's procurement processes and policies as it relates to anyone who wants to do business in Cobb. The proposal, I think, that the commissioner is referencing is from a prospective vendor, but it was an idea brought to us. It was never out there as a proposal that would have been part of an RFP process. We sat down with the individual who asked us to consider it. We did consider his proposal. It would have adversely impacted the county. We sat down with Commissioner Burl at the time with this particular individual, and we all agree that if the appropriate time came about where we were putting out a bid for certain things, we would certainly, certainly could apply. It's an unfortunate situation that this individual feels, I think, that he wasn't heard. We spent an enormous amount of time discussing his ideas about what he wanted to do. We also felt that it would bind a different board or additional, for additional years. I believe that vendor had probably 15 years on a contract existing, was asking for an extensive amount of time more, and it would have adversely impacted the county fiscally. So at that time, we put a pause on it and said, hey, if another opportunity arises, which we didn't even offer as an RFP, it was an idea and invitation to come and sit with us to talk about some things. But at the end of the day, we follow the county's policies with procurement, and this would have been no different. I welcome the opportunity to sit down with staff, the commissioner, and any business owner out there and have a courageous conversation about our processes. But I stand by what we've done and what we continue to do, and I don't think, you know, that we've done anything different in this process than we would do in any other process. Okay? Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner?
But, again, I'm trying to speak in generalities here, but, I mean, it wasn't brought forth to put a bathroom in a hangar. I mean, that's what we're talking about. I mean, it wasn't even brought forward for the board to consider putting a restroom in a hangar, because the restroom facilities, there are none in the hangar, so if someone has to use the restroom, they have to go across the airport. So that's where I'm struggling with this, that, you know, essentially if somebody comes because they want to invest in putting a bathroom or a restroom in a hangar to serve their customers, and it's not even brought before the board. Really?
I think, so I think I understand the question of, when we bring forward an item, we bring forward an item recommending and requesting approval of that. So if there's not a recommendation of approval, there's a recommendation of denial, for whatever reason, and perhaps it's, and I don't have the details of that one in particular, but perhaps it's not just those improvements, but that there's a lease extension requested in tandem with that that maybe doesn't make business sense. If there's a recommendation not to move forward, how does the board know about that? Because there's not an agenda item that says, here's a proposal, we recommend not doing that, because that's just not, not common practice. So we'd be glad to have that conversation with Carl and see if we can set up a process in which if someone does bring forward an idea, and for whatever reason, and we, those reasons may be many, and may be very specific to that particular case, how is the board informed of that? I think that's a reasonable request and one that we would, we would glad to take on to make sure that the board is informed of what is going on and in terms of when we do not recommend something, because you are informed when we do recommend something.
And we, again, will always go to the district commissioner and have those conversations if that vendor wants to go that far and provide us the data and the information. And in a particular case, Commissioner, I can't say it was that one with the restroom, that's exactly what we did and offered additional follow-up. But what I think is required is a larger conversation around understanding the structure and operations of the airport, who's out there, what interests they have, and then we follow the county's policies on procurement. That is the one thing I want us to be able to walk away from this today, is that this followed county procurement processes. And if any vendor wants to sit down and talk with us about how they can enhance the airport, I can't imagine anyone saying they would not want to do that.
Okay. Thank you, yes, I appreciate the offer for an overview. That would be helpful. I think if there's a desire to have any discussion of operations in more detail, that we have more offline discussions about that, because there, this is a significant operation, and the reasonability of all of those requests coming before us for consideration, I don't think is there. But this seems to be quite specific. Just ask that you follow up with that directly.
Of course, glad to.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you. Is it still me or is it Sheriff?
Yes, we're going to go back to the sheriff. Yeah, so getting back to our regular agenda, we are now at the Sheriff's Items tab, and your representation can come forward and present the commissioners your item.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and Commissioner. My name is David Jones, Chief of Staff for the Sheriff's Office. And standing with me, Assistant Chief Gina Hawkins. We are here today seeking approval from the board for fund balance appropriation in amount of $519,839 from fiscal year '23, designated for the funding for the North Central Georgia Law Enforcement Academy program.
Okay, thank you. I will move that we approve this agenda item as has been presented, and we'll hopefully have a second here for a discussion, as I know we've had a lot of discourse from yesterday's agenda session through this morning with respect to this item.
Second for discussion.
All right. And who would like to lead on? We'll start with Commissioner Burl.
First of all, I'd like to thank you, David and Gina, for your detailed email with the explanation. But I'm just being honest, where I'm struggling with this is it's not, it's because of the state decreasing their funding, this is a state agency that the sheriff operates and But we're subsidizing it through the county budget to get you through the training operations, and I understand that. But it's hard to, you know, we just passed a budget, and now we're asking to supplement this when it really should be state funding or other grants or other fees from the jurisdictions that do utilize this training facility. As you know, Cobb has their own Cobb Police Training Facility and Program that's twice, more than twice the number of weeks as the academy that the sheriff runs. So I thought we were going to look at the cost just to get you through the end of the year, but are we still looking at the $500,000 amount?
That is the amount, Commissioner, yes.
To get through our fiscal year or July 1 for the state?
Through 2024. To match us into the, your grade.
Or our budget?
Yes.
Okay. And you've got a current class in training now?
Yes, ma'am. So thank you for expressing your concerns, because they are truly our concerns. And once again, I'm Assistant Chief Gina Hawkins. And starting, and trying to give a little bit of history, when I came in, that's, this is one of the sheriff's major priority that he gave me, which is trying to find or look at the funding being supplied to the training academy. So Georgia Post determines all training academies for the state of Georgia. We are fortunate enough in Cobb County to have two what's considered regional academies, Cobb County Police Department and North Central Georgia Training Academy. So North Central Georgia not only trains us as the sheriff's office on basic mandate training, and for Georgia Post, basic mandate training is only 12 weeks. Different jurisdictions determine whether or not they're going to increase the amount of training their police departments or law enforcement AC has. As you mentioned, Cobb County has 26 weeks. We may have an increase for the sheriff's office more than the 12, but the basic, what is standard for the state of Georgia is just 12 weeks. We enhance our training in a separate professional training enhancement determining our policies and procedures. But for the state, what we also do is support the six cities that are within our county in addition to a total of 41 other agencies. This is, this is in addition to, we have basic jail school. And as you know, in order to man the workforce for our 2,000 inmates, we have to have certified jailers, detention officers in that facility. So as well as any other jail school that's being, detention center that's being offered in our region. So we offer that to other jurisdictions of the 41 partners. That's in addition to, so last year I gave you an example in an email, we had 200 individuals sit for mandate, but we also had 150 jail detention in addition to other professional training, like SWAT training that is offered at North Central Regional Academy. So the bulk of this is us definitely being on the same page of realizing, we gave you the history of, since 2004, the division of revenue coming in for the state for each mandate class, the proportion of each member contributing, a member is one of the 41 agencies that participate in the regional academy, and we're going to look for other revenue to come in. So that's going to require us to go back to the state and ask for that increase. We're also going to look at the increase in membership fees, and then we're also going to look at, and possibly looking at, is there any type of other funding that could come in to support the individuals that are not the sheriff's office staff? So it's going to require us going to other cities that are within Cobb County and other regions and having a good conversation with them. But this request is just to get us to the end of the year, so we have this time to truly evaluate all the finances and get what finances say, a true, what is the true employee impact going through the academy, and to make sure we're covering our people based off of our budget, but they also contributing even more for their person coming through our academy, for whatever training that's being supplied.
But this money has to be sustainable, because it's operational costs or instructors' salaries and things like that. And even with the state money that was allocated in the past years that they've now cut or reduced, we're still not even breaking even with the fees that are being charged and with the cost of the instructors and the operations. But that can't be, that can't be, those fees can't be increased without legislative approval. So you've got to wait till January till they go back in session before you can even ask.
I believe that's why the sheriff made this one of my major priorities when I came in, to look at and figure out, how can we find more funding for this? Yes.
Right, okay. But if the fees are approved to be increased, it won't be more state money coming in, it'll be from the user fees that they pay to come to the academy.
We're going to, we're going to focus on both. We're going to look for both. That's our goal.
Right, right. Okay. Legally, is there any provision that we can put in here to be reimbursed once these grants or money from the state comes in or user fees are increased?
This is a state contract that allowed very little bit of changes, and it really does not address the dollar amounts. We can't compel the state to provide specific dollar amounts back to us.
Not the state, but from the sheriff's budget. Can he reimburse the general fund if we allot this today?
Well, you guys could do whatever you want to regarding his budget, that wouldn't affect the contract. The contract's was being approved, so.
Okay, but when you get the fees from the state or grants or whatever, are they, they're allocated to pay for the instructors and your operational costs?
My understanding, based off of the Director of Finance saying that is the county's policy, that it first come and that is reimbursed first. I believe I saw, is that accurate? That is accurate. What he said yesterday, which is, the first thing that happens is the reimbursement goes first, based off the county policy from the grant that, for the cost. He gave me a thumbs up, by the way.
Okay. So that's something that could be agreed upon to do.
Thank you.
Not with this contract, because this is just the state, I understand that, but...
Yes, Commissioner, so basically how this will work?
Yes, Commissioner. So basically, how this will work is we will approve the contract, and the budget in the award is just over $1 million. We know there's anticipated fees, and there'll be a general fund basically match, which is what is being asked for here today. We will only send the match based on the need. So if there is additional revenue that comes in from user fees or from the state, regardless of the source, we will simply reduce the match that we will send over. Does that make sense? So the $500,000 that is being requested is really worst-case scenario. So if there is any change to user fees or any additional revenue that comes in, or vice versa, even on the expense, if there's a savings on the expense side, we will not transfer the full amount. So every grant has to be closed out with the revenues matching exactly to the expenditures. So that is how we'll operate this grant, no different than any other. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, it does, but is that a guarantee from the sheriff that that will be done?
The transfer is actually generated through finance. So the sheriff has control of the operation expense side, and then we'll, obviously, as they shared, we'll have input on the fees. And I think that is very, communicated very well that that'll be a priority. The transfer is actually generated through the Finance Department, so we send the match based on the need.
Okay.
Okay.
I just have a quick follow-up with respect to that. Knowing that those funds will be offset, how did we derive to the total amount we have today?
So the total amount, the 1 point, or $1,600,000 is listed on the contract. That is based on the operational expense. So you'll see the detail attached to the agenda, line by line, giving that operational expense. That is going to be the personnel assigned to run the academy and any operational expense associated with that. So now with that being said, you know, we talked about, I think it was shared yesterday, we're almost at fully staffed, or at fully staffed. If there was a vacancy, that would generate some savings. Now, obviously, the desire is to have that fully staffed and continue to fill, but like if an employee were to leave tomorrow, that could impact the cost as that position is being filled. And vice versa, as we run through the operations, if there's any savings in the operating line, that would also impact the cost. So just like any other grant, we're required to submit a budget as a part of that process to give an overall cost. And with any other grant, the bottom line is that is the ceiling, and the actuals should come in under that, and our match will be associated with the actuals, not necessarily the budget. But the request before you is to show you basically highest cost scenario, which would be budgetary cost if the revenues came in at the $150,000 that is in the agenda item, the required amount that we'd have to transfer is listed there.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. And I know that was something I was really looking at yesterday when we had this very robust discussion around the reimbursements and the pacing in which those funds would be transferred out. The other thing that I was really hoping to see today, though, was a modification of the language to strengthen our pursuance of those user fees, just some type of language modification in this agenda item saying that was the intent, that we would make sure that these would be requested. Obviously, we can't compel them to be what they are, but that that language would be there, or that we would have some supplementary resolution indicating that we're not necessarily thrilled with the lack of funding for this from, for regional function.
So I think what was mentioned is this is the contract that's being proposed.
Correct.
But I think in our, the email that we sent over is our intent to say, these are the things that the sheriff's office committed to. First, we're going to go to, and the proposed action forward is going to the state and advocating for that. That's one thing. Also, going through other cities, because we didn't have time to even advocate. And we wrote that in the email that we're going through the other cities, as well as looking for any other funding sources that may be optional.
Correct, and I perceive all of that. I was looking for that in the agenda item itself, just stronger language around how we were accommodating, how we were seeking to accommodate the funding for that. Because sometimes we include that type of language, even with ARPA disbursements, that we would continue to seek out grant funding. It was more so for the record, less so for the email correspondence, because that's fine. It's just, this is what we're approving.
With all due respect, I didn't know if we could adjust the agenda item language at this late hour, so.
And it would be really dependent upon, you could make it part of the motion. If you want to make it part of the motion. I mean, all this is the recommendation. You guys can make it part of the motion. Would be the language that Mr. Volkman offered to the Board regarding, which is what the policy is, that'd be part of the motion. First portion of it just addressed the contract. The rest of it speaks to the financial components of it-
Correct.
That allow, if you want that language in the motion, then you can do that, and that could be approved.
Okay.
Gina, thank you so much for the email on yesterday. It was very detailed. Thank you so much. My follow-up question is, when is the grant application submitted?
I believe July 1. No, I'm sorry. Hold on a second.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Dewayne Morse. The, this is a reoccurring- contract. It's kind of fits into a grant scenario, but it's been renewed since, yearly renewed since the 70s. So it's automatically, they send us, the comptroller from the training center sends us the paperwork with the fees like you have in the agenda item, and then we bring that to the Board.
So to your question, it probably should be evaluated during budget process of maybe in January of us looking at, well, right now, we're looking at it. But that way, in the future, we're really looking at how we can adjust this contract, if that's to your question, when is it going to be reevaluated?
Well, I guess my question, what I'm getting to is, do you need to submit a grant application for 2025? I'm just trying to figure out, you know, in 2025, what happens if the state decreases its funding?
That will be done between a conversation from the sheriff's office and the comptroller at Georgia Public Safety Training Center. They are, we've already spoken to her, and she is with us in going to the state to get some legislative updates on this. And they understand, but they said, the earliest we can do it, and we've had this conversations for three or four months, knowing this is coming, trying to get the fees, but we couldn't do it because the legislation had ended that we can't. The first time anything will take effect is 2025 with the state budget.
Right.
So we're also trying to deal with the cities and the counties that we deal with, the 41 partner agencies that we have. We've got to be, you know, look at their budget cycles also. A lot of them are July to June and October. So we have to get this out early, like the sheriff wants us to get out and start talking these fees before they get into their planning stages of the 25 budgets for all the agencies.
Right, okay. I appreciate that. I'm just concerned regarding the funding from the state. I know that the DA's office has also had some challenges with the state, and part of my concern is the county having to sustain this. And I understand that this agenda item will carry us through to 2024, but it would still come back before the Board in 2025. So I'm just trying to figure out a balance in which we can move forward with this agenda item. It appears that there are students. You have some upcoming classes, at least two more cycles before the end of the year. So I'm just trying to figure out a way to allow that to happen, but not necessarily put the county on the hook to sustain this in 2025. And perhaps maybe that's a question for Bill?
I believe, since we've already funded 2024-
Right.
We have a budget for the North Central Academy in that budget. We're only talking about the difference, it's $500,000.
Right, I understand. I understand.
Yes, so, and you are correct, us trying to figure out this time period although this has been historically, for two decades now, been supported by the county and by the state. Now we need to look at what is a fair and reasonable division over the past years, and look at true cost impact per person coming through the academy. That's where the discussion is going to happen right now. This is what we're asked, is trying to give us this time to go back, not just to the state, but to the other jurisdictions that are really utilizing our training facility, which is only 1 of 15. Because if it is gone, then comes the question of where do we send our staff? Where does the rest of the jurisdictional send their staff? They would have to send it to one of the other 14 regions. And truly, on capacity alone, I can't imagine any other regional academy being able to service the needs that we have in order to, one, our sheriff's office alone, making sure that we're accredited alone, all the training is needed, as well as all that, if you saw the list that I provided, we have a waitlist for every academy coming up in the future. I only gave you through October. We also have a proposed academy for November and December. So there's a, for each academy class, there is a waitlist of individuals that are regional-wide, trying to get in their personnel for public safety.
Okay. And also in the list that you sent, the action plan, and item number three, and I don't know if you have it there in front of you or it's committed to memory, but you make reference to the sheriff's office working with member agencies? Can you describe or share with us who those agencies are?
Yeah, you can give an example. We'll be at the very bottom of it that has, is the 41 agencies. Example might be the size of six cities that are in our jurisdictions. We have Villa Rica, we have Carroll County SO, Douglas County, Canton, I'm saying Smyrna. We have other jurisdictions that we work with, but there are 41 participating agencies that are part of, that pay membership dues to come through our academy.
Okay.
It's in a regional area, North Central-
Yes.
Georgia, because there's one in Forsyth, Georgia, as well.
Way up.
Covers the South Side.
There's only, there's literally only 15 in the whole state, so. And as I said before, Cobb PD's academy is considered a regional academy.
And has there been an increase in fees to participate in the training program?
The fee participation has been fluctuated. And when I say fee participation, when I look at it, I think it's low in my opinion, but I would have to look at historically. So from $75 to $100, $150, I think I've seen the highest. But those have fluctuated, and I need to dig down deeper and to figure out why some are different than others. And that might be a size of an agency. But for each individual that comes to the academy, that is what the membership fee is considered per person.
Okay. Okay, are there any other comments or questions, Commissioner Gamm?
So where I'm struggling is we just went through a budget cycle. And to Bill, through no fault of your own, I know we had limited discussions, but this was never discussed, which means the sheriff never brought it to Finance's attention, to bring it to our attention prior to the Board approving the budget. So here we are, two weeks from the budget approval, and now you're asking for a fund balance appropriation, when fund balance is typically used only for capital projects per our policy and not for operational expenses, because then we are going to essentially and potentially increase our requirements, because again, we're funding operations, not a capital improvement. But beyond that, you said that in 2004, I believe, you have numbers going back. So my understanding is that if we really look at the numbers, we've been seeing where we've been coming to this point where the academy is not operating, it is operating at a loss, which would mean we're going to have to subsidize more of the general fund balance. The sheriff has been in office now for three years. So to me, he should have been aware of this in lobbying for changes from funding prior to today, when you're now looking for the general fund to be subsidizing operational cost. We also, it also came very clear yesterday that you were saying it's like $100 to $150 a person to be for training. But if, I don't know what the training center's budget is right now, but divided by the classes, there's no way we're going to break even. Yet, there's also no way that Cobb County will ever be competitive with other sheriff's office departments in salaries if we are subsidizing the training cost for other counties, which is what it is appearing is happening through this training center. So I have a lot of problems there, because again, we will never be competitive salary rise, because we know our salaries or our funding is going for training, yet only a third of our officers go through each of these training courses each time. So I know this agreement has been in place for decades, it sounds like.
That's correct.
But it sounds like there should have been lobbying a long time ago to start making changes with the state as far as how this has gone, not only to ensure that Cobb County taxpayers don't bear the burden for other jurisdictions' training, but that also enables our officers to be at a competitive pay range because we're not subsidizing somebody else's training.
So I'm going to try to cover some of the ones that I'm, the comments that you mentioned, Commissioner, and then I'll let the Director of Finance comment in regards to if the sheriff brought it to his attention, because I know that he'll be able to comment and say that it was brought to his attention. But you are correct in the aspect of how long. In the email, it does have year to year, and that's part of the research that we're looking at, how long has the division and the separation of proportion of accounting for the training? And if I think in the beginning, the reason why I'm trying to give the history of what is mandated for anyone to have any type of consideration of saying you are a certified officer or you're a certified jailer. That's the basic. So that's the first thing that is a need. It's a need that we have as a sheriff's office, because we have a detention center that has over 2,000 inmates in there. So the need to be constitutional first, to make sure the services being provided in the jail is accurate and the people are trained, is a major need that we have in the county. The second thing is we need officers trained. And there's no way, if we only have two in our jurisdiction of Cobb County, that we can have our training take place in the Cobb County PD's Training Academy, because we have too many employees that we have to make sure that they're trained. But in the aspect of the proportion, I know that the sheriff has been advocating at least in the past year or so, but I don't know historically, other than what I provided in the email, which is year after year, what the difference of, that the state has provided versus the difference that the county has subsidized to ensure our personnel and the county's personnel are trained appropriately. So we did mention that increase possibly could be the increase in salaries that we have for our employees, because the bulk of this request is for trainers that are providing all the thousands of hours of training that are going through the academy. But it is also to ensure that the regional individuals that are being trained regional are up to par, have standards, have more than just basic standards. They have advanced training. They have SWAT training. They have supervisory training, all the things that are standard, and then some is going through this academy that we have to make sure we are equipping the personnel that are working in this area, working in Cobb County and in the region with the tools needed to be able to keep our public safe. But I'll let the Director say if this was the first time it was presented.
So Commissioner, we did meet with the sheriff as we head into this, and obviously, we talked about the timing of this. So this is a July 1 to June 30 grant cycle or contract cycle. So in the early stages of this, the sheriff did bring this to our attention. But we're very close to budget adoption. Funds had already been allocated, so we consulted with the sheriff's office of how the best to handle that. We suggested bringing a standalone agenda item so it could be fully explained to the commissioners as when we brought, when we got to this point. So the conversations could be had. So, and you'll notice if you look at the interfund transfers since 2020, they have stepped up. So you'll notice the 2024 transfer is the exact same as 2023. So without knowing the commitment from the state, as well as the users' fees, when we start the budget process, we usually use the same growth rate. So that is one of the challenges when we look at this item, is that if nothing changes, the 2025 budget will look at an $800,000 transfer compared to the $329,000 that we adopted for '24. And that is simply the difference between the $500 that is being requested and the 300 that we adopted in 2024. So that is how we'll handle that as we move forward. But again, with the Board's direction of going back and looking at user fees, those conversations will have to be had as part of the budget process as we know where those stand. Now, the challenge that we will face is some of those are tied to the delegation legislative session. So we may not know a good answer on those until March. And then even if we do have an answer on that, the state fees, you probably aren't going to see an impact until the next cycle, which would be July 1 of 2024 through June 30 of 2025, which would impact our 2025 budget. So we will have that opportunity to look at that. But it is going to be one of those, just based on the timing and which the nature of these contracts happen. And we have a lot of grants that are in this cycle that we base it on the growth and the historical rate. So as this has continued to grow, we would anticipate a small change. This is a larger-than-expected change, so this is something that we encourage the sheriff's office to bring to the Board's full attention and have this conversation individually, rather than trying to make a last-minute budget change when funds have been fully allocated.
And while I appreciate your explanation, but I also know through conversations with you that the sheriff has been moving his funds around to cover other areas that have been shortfallled due to- been shortfallled due to financial management. So that's where I'm still struggling, because again, the sheriff knew that this was a requirement of his office to maintain, yet has chosen not to ensure that he has funds based on spending in other areas. I think to address what Commissioner Burl was trying to get at, while we understand that it's an up-to-amount, the.
That's correct.
Up-to-amount, whatever it is.
Yes.
I think what Commissioner Burl was getting at is just like when the, the board has approved general fund dollars to be allocated to SPOST projects. Essentially, there's language in there that says the SPOST will be, or the, the general fund will be reimbursed.
Correct.
So I think what Commissioner Burl was getting at is, let's say that we give the sheriff's department $300,000.
Sure.
Does he have to repay that $300,000 to the general fund?
So the answer, the answer is ideally, we don't give it in advance. So SPOST projects are a little different. So some of our SPOST projects that we've done this for in the past, we have literally transferred cash to SPOST and then use revenue above projections at the end, possibly at the conclusion of the project to repay the general fund. This will not be that. So this is, the, the transfer is done on a reimbursement basis, so either monthly or quarterly, we'll send the funds to make it balance out, so there should not be a desire to send any funds back. But I would assure, I will assure the board that if that were in fact the case, like let's say on the last day of the grant cycle, there was additional funds that came in, we would not send those funds for that month, but if it came in where there was surplus, yes, those funds would be returned to the general fund, because when we close out any grants, again, they have to match. Revenues have to equal expenditures, there's no income or loss. It's simply what was the cost to provide the service? Here are the, the funding sources, which would be the state funding, user fees, and then any transfer would be your delta. So that, that is exactly how we would handle that. But ideally, this is done on a reimbursement basis, and there shouldn't be a need to send any back. But if, if that did arise, those funds would be returned, yes.
So in the agenda item, I know, I think you have the book in front of you.
I got it.
It's at the bottom of page 158. It is requested that all user fees collected during the program period, so it is only going to be through that period.
That is correct.
That will go directly here.
Yes.
Because again, if something changes and they start collecting way more, again, this is where the question becomes, can you then take it back and put it back to the general fund to cover what we've been subsidizing?
If the user fees associated with the period of this contract, so let's say it ends June 30, and we collect user fees in July that were associated with that time period, those would be captured into that calculation, absolutely. But it is only for that service period, July 1 of 2023 through June 30 of 2024. So anything associated, because a lot of times, think about this on the last day of the month, if we had to purchase something for operational expense, that invoice may not be paid or hit until the following month. So all that is taken into account. We look at service time period when we do the revenues as well as expenditures, so those do match.
Okay. We have two additional questions. Commissioner Sheffield, did you have a question also?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Richardson?
It wasn't a question, it's proposed language to add.
Okay, let's have.
And I wanted to piggyback on what Kelly was saying I was referring to.
Okay, let's continue to have discussion on the substance of it, and then we can get to the motion. Can you repeat your comments?
Sure, I said, I don't have any additional comments or questions, I have proposed language to add to this agenda.
Okay. Commissioner Burl?
What you just explained to Commissioner Gammel, as far as this period, if you go back to the state in January and get additional funding for the academy, and it has to be designated to this project, not any other funds in the sheriff's purview.
Yes.
And any increases in user fees would go back to the academy.
Yes.
Which is in the general fund to cover this increase. Okay.
I can't speak to, I thought you were done with your comments.
Well, I, I kind of was, but if we're, we can't add language to the state contract, so would this be like a clerk's note to add to the agenda item?
I don't know what the language is yet, so why don't we listen to what the language is and see how it fits.
Proposed to add to the agenda, not to the contract.
To the motion.
Okay.
Okay. I can't speak specifically, but I know that I've seen this agenda item before, and we've had discussion similar, when we've had to subsidize or add additional funding through fund balance. And I can't say if we did this with the other sheriff, but I remember distinctly having this conversation before. I'm not saying there couldn't be due diligence to have a conversation with commissioners, but I think there was just a timing issue for when we receive a letter. I think that was part of a conversation of when we just receive information and how it's being considered and when it gets in the agenda book. So as much as this is uncomfortable for everyone, I certainly don't want to do this in the spirit of, of being adversarial. I'd like for us to see this being a win if Cobb is a leader where we are training others in a region, that's other people coming to our county who's, who are depending on our leadership to provide training. I think what I desire, and I'm hearing from Commissioner Gammel and others, we want to be good fiscal stewards, so we are not disproportionately offsetting the cost of other jurisdictions and putting that burden on our taxpayer. But I have full confidence, based on the way that this discussion went today, and your after responsiveness immediately during and, during the meeting and beyond, that we can work together to find a, a way to resolve it. And I think with additional language that Commissioner Richardson will add, that will provide additional support and protection for the county, so that we're operating in good faith to address this.
Thank you, Chairwoman, and if I can say this, just from the sheriff's perspective of transparency and, and knowing to, you know, this is not uncomfortable for me, this is educating the community and educating us all on the costs that this has to run the academy, the need and the necessity. You know, he is very transparent of, of understanding that his other priority is being accredited, making sure that the employees that work for him are leading the way in what we do as a, as a sheriff's office. So I appreciate it, and definitely the language, changing on agenda is one of our definitely priorities.
Thank you. So with that, Commissioner Richardson?
Sure, I'm taking a crack at it, so I'm sure.
This will be like zoning. We'll work together.
Can help me, yeah.
Figure it out.
But yeah, I mean, certainly want to echo the, the comments that the chairwoman made. This is certainly not adversarial, this is, we want to be supportive in your advocacy. We, we agree that this is not appropriately funded. So with that, I would like to, I guess, modify the motion to approve the contract with additional language, that although these funds will be earmarked as, on an as-needed basis, that reimbursements will be made by the sheriff's office for any cost savings, increase in, in user fees, or additional subsidies as provided by the state, what, for these aforementioned allocations, and will also be advocated for by the sheriff's office.
Okay.
We're actually, we're actually tied, we're actually tied to the recommendation, which creates all of these accounts. And so I didn't, I didn't see where that would fit in, because we need to have all of the recommendation, that's actually the, the assumed motion that's presented to the board. And so where would that language be placed in that? Because we need to have all of the language that's in there.
In the recommendation.
Yeah.
Well, my concern was when you led off with the contract. We, we cannot modify the contract. It's only agenda item that can be modified. So when, when you led off with the contract right there, it negated it for me, because what we're hearing is we can't modify the contract.
No, that's fine, and it was only because I know this is a two-part component with the contract being in the approval that's before us, so I would like to.
Oh, you were trying to mirror that language.
Correct.
To acknowledge the original motion and then add your language.
To the agenda item itself.
Okay.
At the end of the recommendation.
Just a quick question. Bill? So instead of trying to do this, because this is a critical document that we have in front of us, does the academy have enough funds to continue running for the next two weeks and operating?
No.
No.
And, and so, but, and I'm hearing no echoed in the audience, because what I also find interesting is that this contract essentially expired June 30 of 2023. So essentially, the county has been operating without a contract with the state now for seven weeks?
Yes, and again, I remember this being a timing issue in the past when we've approved this, so this is not new, but perhaps we're looking at it with a renewed sense of interest. So again, let's not penalize what we cannot change in the past. What I'm hearing from commissioners, perhaps a path forward for how we address this, with additional language, not modifying the contract terms, but adding in specific consideration for reimbursement or offsetting of funds. So I want us to, if we can, consider what she has presented.
No, I just had a follow-up with respect to the as-needed basis, and I just wanted a little information around that, because what we're asking, what, what we're asking to consider is to the end of 20, I'm sorry, yeah, June 2024, so it won't be like on a rolling as-needed basis as they need funding, but I just needed a little clarification.
It was my understanding in yesterday's discussion that these funds would be transferred out as they were being spent down, so that it wasn't all the money was being transferred out at once, but that as those expenses were incurred, that's when the money would be transferred over. So in the case that something happens in March, something random, I don't know, I'm trying to create an opportunity where we could then stop, start collecting reimbursements against that during that phase.
And just as a follow-up, Bill, would that require an agenda item each time they need to replenish?
No. So basically, what this does is establish the budget, allows us to reimburse the training academy for the, the difference between the user fees and the expenses. So we will do that if this is approved. That's, that's simply the process that we will operate under. I think what the commissioner, commission is asking for is some language to say that there'll be advocacy to look at the fees, which I think the sheriff's office has committed to do. And then if, if you would like to add language, that to say if any additional fees are collected, the, the budget could be, the, the interfund transfer budget could be reduced to reflect that. That would probably be, in my recommendation, a, something agenda-worthy as far as direction to us, to say that we would modify that transfer budget from the general fund to the academy in relation to any additional fees that may come in. Now, in our practice in the past, we simply have not sent it. The budget has remained the same, and at the end of the fiscal year, it's closed out. But if that is something that the board would wish to do, as to give us direction from a board direction to have a budgetary action, that would probably be the best-case scenario to say if there's additional user fees, the general fund transfer budget to the academy could be reduced in relation to those increased fees.
Right, okay. So just on the as-needed basis, and Gina, perhaps this is a question for you, the ask before us is 519, if we move forward on an as-needed basis, then that number would be modified to what today?
Sorry. Actually, it'd be 519, the as-needed basis would be how much you'd send over on a monthly or quarterly basis. So the 519 would remain the same. So in order to reduce the 519, I would suggest we add the language to say, if there is an increase of user fees, the budget would be reduced in correspondence to that increase.
Okay.
And I really want to, sorry, just because I don't want it to get lost with this conversation, it's not just user fees, there are three categories.
Yes.
For the increase, grant subsidies, cost savings, and user fees, but yes, go ahead.
Correct, any funding that is.
Any funding, because it could be other sources that are.
That's correct. Any funding that comes in in excess, that can be a possibility of what's outlined, will first be reimbursed per finance.
Right, yeah, and, and maybe I'm just not really making, articulating this clearly, but when, when we say on an as-needed basis, we're transferring funds to you as you need it for the program, correct?
My understanding, let me see if I take, it is reimbursement, so.
I'm sorry, maybe that was for Richardson.
The cap is the 519.
It's the 519, but in your modified language, you also mentioned that it should be transferred on an as-needed basis.
It can represent whatever language makes sense for the process that they're describing, which is the, I just understand that it's, when that reimbursement comes to call, then it is put in, but it would be reimbursed back if.
Okay.
And that's for that period through 20, June of 24. Okay, so.
Well, it's technically in the recommendation.
And it would be my desire to see us not just pursue this for '24, but for us to pursue funding for the future fiscal years, that we're not back in the same situation.
That'll have to come in the budget cycle.
Well, the unfortunate.
You're correct, it should come in the budget cycle, especially since the contract starts in July 1. It should come likely in March or sometime period with the discussions.
We can have it then, I just, I'm hoping that because the budget precedes this agenda item, that we will be actively pursuing other funds for the next fiscal year, not just this one.
That's correct.
So the budget item request is hopefully less than what it's projected to be, or less than what it is today.
And Chairwoman, I just want to add, that, that is one of the reasons we did not enlist an impact item here, is because it does run the term of June 30 of 2024, and we did not list an impact item committing the board to move that forward, knowing the conversations that were going to be had on the revenue side.
Understood.
Yes, Commissioner.
Dwayne, yesterday, you said that you, the sheriff just got the agreement to renew.
We get it always about three weeks after the, the start date.
It expires.
It's, it's inherently, that's when we got it, and that's when we have to get on to it. We've been in, the sheriff and I have been in contact with the comptroller, trying to get everything worked out, ironed out with the state legislature and the Public Safety Board from the state to get this on, on their radar. And JIP, I call it JIP, the Public Safety Training Center, is going to help us try to recoup some of this money and get our user fees added, because they do understand.
But Commissioner duly noted, we should be proactively getting this contract ahead of time.
What I'd like to do, let's go ahead and take a 10-minute recess. I can have you talk with Commissioner Richardson, and by the time we come back, we can have this drafted in a motion that we can approve, or consider approving. Okay, we'll go ahead and take a break and come back at about 11:20. Thank you.
This one was kind of a difficult one and, you know, and Gina, you and I talked yesterday about walking the halls and how important that is in giving us an opportunity to kind of digest, go back, ask questions, et cetera. So I know that you guys were on a time crunch and then your consideration for not bringing this around budget. We appreciate that. As I mentioned earlier, I am concerned with respect to approving any item that will have long-term impacts with respect to the county sustaining it. But where I am, where I do feel comfortable is that it would still need to come before the board for 2025. So what we have before us is just to get us over through the next year, through 2024. And I understand that there are several that are waiting to begin classes. So, you know, I really want to move this forward for that reason. But it will just be very, very helpful if moving forward, we can have these discussions on the front end.
Absolutely. Very good. Thank you, all of you, for working together on this. And I look forward to us finding some additional funding to offset this and again, looking for ways to reduce costs for the next fiscal year and those beyond. But I'm supportive of your motion as written. And we'll, I know that's a modification. We don't need to second it since we had a motion and a second.
Is there general consensus for her modification?
It is for me.
Or Lisa, I'm here. Okay. So with that, we have a motion and a second. We'll call the question. The motion passes four to one with Commissioner Gamble in opposition. I need to leave this meeting for another one, so I'm going to leave you in the trusted hands of our vice chair for the remainder of the meeting.
Go ahead, Drew.
Good morning again. DOT has three items for your consideration on the regular agenda. Our first item is recommend the Board of Commissioners approve project number B-2575, Task Order Number Two, to the 2022 Master Task Order Contract with Jacobs Engineering Group Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $30,585 for the design of a new traffic signal on Veterans Memorial Highway at Buckner Road. Authorize a corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you. Drew, I'm so excited to see this move forward and I can check it off of my bucket list because yes, it was on there, but so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Called a question? Motion passes four to zero with Chairwoman Cupid absent.
Thank you, Commissioner. We share the excitement. Our next item is recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two final to the contract with SD&amp;C Incorporated, a savings to the project in the amount of $242,331.22 for Buckner Road sidewalk. Project number X-2766, authorize a corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Called a question? Motion passes four zero with Chairwoman Cupid absent.
Thank you. And our final item this morning is recommend the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA Section 32-3-4. Authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on Mableton Parkway pedestrian improvements, Phase Two, project number X-2770. Adopt a resolution and order informed substantially similar to the attached and as approved by the County Attorney's Office and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Called a question? Motion passes four zero with Chairwoman Cupid absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Michael.
Morning, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Deputy County Manager. We have one item for consideration this morning. Our item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Surface Masters Incorporated to provide construction services for parking lot resurfacing at Silver Comet Florence Trailhead under the 2022 Park Splash Program. We ask the BOC approve the contract with Surface Masters in an amount not to exceed Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
District Four Day.
I know.
Okay, second. Discussion? I thought you were taking your water. Discussion? Called a question? Motion passes four zero with Chairwoman Cupid absent.
Thank you.
That concludes our regular agenda into public comment. Oh, no speakers. Thank you. All right, well, on into the public address. Commissioner Gamble, tell us what's going on.
Thank you. Join us for our walk and talk on August 23rd. We are going to continue our conversations at our next meetup, which promotes community engagement and supports healthy living. Join me on the next walk and talk at 9:30 a.m., which is August 23rd. There is a typo, Ryan. At Kennesaw Mountain National Battlefield Park, which is located at 900 Kennesaw Mountain Drive in Kennesaw, we will meet in the Chitum Hill Parking Area Trailhead and go from there. Hope to see you soon. Happening right now is the farmer's market for seniors. And due to the overwhelming response, our Cobb Senior Services had added this event for today. And again, it'll be from 11:30 to 12:30 at the Senior Wellness Center at 1150 Powder Springs Street in Marietta. You can reserve your $50 voucher today if you meet the eligibility requirements that you are 60 years of age plus, you're a Georgia resident, your household income level. And for more information, you can call 770-528-1060 or go ahead and stop by and they will help you from there. Lastly, our UGA Extension Master Naturalist Program is a nine-week hands-on environmental education course that explores habitats and ecosystems across our region of Georgia. This program will include in-depth lectures, tours, hikes, and hands-on learning experiences with experts on topics including ecology, horticulture, wildlife agriculture, lymnology, pollinators, water resources, and more. Classes will be held weekly starting August 24th and run through October 26th. For more information on how to register, you can email danielprice@cobcounty.org or you can also call the Cobb County Extension Office at 770-528-4082. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, District Two, from the office. D2 Internships, are you looking for an opportunity to work with the District Two office? We are currently accepting applications for two exciting internships. Social Media Manager, a social media intern will run and manage all of D2's social media accounts. And this intern will be responsible for posting content and responding to comments and messages. And the Community Cabinet Lead. The Community Cabinet Lead will coordinate projects with cabinet members. The cabinet lead is a member of the office and serves as the primary point of contact and liaison between the office and the members of the cabinet. Applications will be accepted through August 31st. Applicants must be at least 16. If you have any questions or want any more information, please contact Megan at megan.postell@cobcounty.org. The Home Buyer Seminar success. Sunday, July 30th, our office hosted a homebuyer empowerment seminar. This event was a huge success in connecting homebuyers with existing resources in Cobb. If you would like information about resources for the homebuying process, please contact our Housing and Zoning Cabinet Member, Krista Blue. And you can see some really wonderful pictures. I already heard really great feedback from those that attended and took some voracious notes on things to do and some tips and tricks. August D2 Community Focus is education. So for this month, for the month of August, our office is partnering with Kids Care to host a teacher supply drive. Locations for donation drop-offs include Sewell Mill Library, Vinings Library, and East Cobb Library. Donations will be collected through, from August 7th through the 31st. All donations will go to supporting Cobb teachers and for questions, please contact Megan as well. Something to note, we also got word, and it'll come up a little bit later, well, I'll say it later, I guess. Okay, the Budget Committee. Our office is now accepting applications for the District Two Budget Committee. Saw that there was a lot of intrigue in how our budget and millage rate, how that all operates within the county, and also how that corresponds with other departments and agencies. And we absolutely want to identify ways to streamline and find some opportunities for where we can improve our budgeting practices and the outcomes for our taxpaying residents. So committee members will also be able to help with educating the public on best budget practices as well. And we are seeking passionate community members with backgrounds in accounting. So this one's pretty competitive and appreciate seeing the applications that have come in thus far. From the Community, Cobb Library introduces books by mail. The Cobb Library System's new books by mail program is a free service that provides materials to Cobb County residents who are unable to visit the library. The service is for residents who experience physical disabilities, have long-term illnesses, or lack transportation. Library will send up to four items for a nine-week checkout period, and items can be books, CDs, and DVDs. You can get more information on cobcat.org/booksbymail. And then lastly, the Kroger at Terrell Mill grand opening. Just something to note, they had their grand opening. Customers can enjoy a drive-up pharmacy fuel center and Starbucks inside the store. Location will provide a clean and safe environment for patrons to shop for groceries. And just as a note, they also, they also have already benefited or given a first donation to the teacher supply drive. So we are thankful for that. And for those that are looking out into the audience who are here, you'll notice a very familiar face who joined us today. It is my past district assistant, and Aaliyah is sitting in the audience. So good to see you again.
Off to Harvard next week.
Off to Harvard next week, that's right. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
United Military Care and Cobb County Government came together last weekend on Friday and Saturday to host the Second Annual We Care Veterans Resource Fair at the Civic Center. The free event provided an opportunity to sign up for VA benefits, access state and local programs for veterans, and have questions answered. Organizations provided free groceries and refreshments as well as free haircuts. This was a very successful event with over 3,700 attending and over 100 vendors for our veterans. We thank all those who participated, those who sponsored and attended this very important event, and we hope more will attend next year's event. You can visit wecarefair, wecarevetfair.com for more information. Thanks to United Military Care. So Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets, we have our 241st adoption here. Daniel Nelson served in the Army for eight years and adopted this beautiful Australian Shepherd from Cobb County Animal Shelter last week. Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets program is a well-received program that was featured during the We Care Veterans Fair and the First Responder 5K events over the weekend. We will be sharing information on other adoptions that occurred at those events soon. If you're a veteran and interested in adoption, pets adopted through this program are at no cost. They're fully vetted, have all their shots, and spayed or neutered, and microchipped. So go visit the Cobb County Animal Shelter and pick out your new best friend. And we'd like to give a shout out to Metro Atlanta Ambulance Services. Last week, the Cobb Police Department was honored to accept a donation check for $15,500 from Metro Atlanta Ambulance for a new canine officer in the Cobb Police Canine Unit. Thank you to Metro Ambulance for your generous donation. And in the picture is Lieutenant Mark Blakeney and his canine partner Finn, me, of course, Christopher Davis with Metro Atlanta Ambulance, and Director of Cobb Public Safety, Michael Register, accepting the check. Thank you, Metro. I think they're going to name him Metro, too. We have an open house coming up this Wednesday, August 9th, tomorrow, from 5:30 to 7:30 on the Noonday Creek Trail Extension Study. It's a drop-in community open house to learn more about the Noonday Creek Trail Extension Study, 5:30 to 7:30, Wednesday, August 9th, in the Community Room at Children's Healthcare of Atlanta at Town Center, 625 Big Shanty Road in Kennesaw. This is an opportunity to review the draft concept and learn more about how it was developed. The project team will be available to guide you through the stations, and you'll also be able to give feedback and ask questions. The Cobb Veterans Memorial is having another fundraiser for the memorial. The Foundation Board is hosting cocktails, concerts in cocktails, a fundraising event to help build the memorial. It's from 5:00 to 9:00, Friday, August 25th, at the Cowan Historic Mill, 4271 Southside Drive in Acworth. Proceeds will benefit the Cobb Veterans Memorial Park. The event is free for all veterans and $10 for non-veterans. If you're interested in being a sponsor and would like more information, go to cobveteransmemorial.com or call 770-951-7058. On Friday, we honored Detective James Uzi as he was laid to rest after a two-year battle with cancer. Detective Uzi made a lasting impression on everyone he worked with, and his positive attitude, fighting spirit during difficulty serves as an inspiration to all. Please join us in remembering his outstanding service, work, and accomplishments. Our condolences to his family and the entire public safety family, and especially his wife, Lori, who works in the Tax Commissioner's Office. Okay, congratulations. The rating agencies have given Cobb County another AAA rating for the 26th year in a row. Cobb County received confirmation last week that all three New York-based financial rating agencies have given the county their highest ratings again, citing its prudent budgeting and a substantial amount of revenue raising flexibility. Cobb is one of only 50 counties nationwide to receive a AAA financial rating from Fitch, Moody's, and SMP. This is the 26th consecutive year Cobb has received a AAA rating from all agencies. Only a handful of counties have matched Cobb's strength. Cobb taxpayers benefit from the high ratings as they provide the county government with lower borrowing costs, help attract business and investment, greater flexibility to address economic challenges, and low-risk premiums. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you. District Four News and Updates. We are just 11 days away from our Third Annual Career Fair and Tenant Forum. This is a free event, and it will be held on Saturday, August 19th, at the Cobb County Public Safety Training Academy, located at 2435 East West Connector in Austell. You will have the opportunity to meet with and conduct onsite interviews with employers of your choice. Chief Magistrate Judge Brendan Murphy and Cobb Legal Aid will discuss tenant rights and the eviction process and be on hand to help with answers to evictions. The Georgia Micro Enterprise Network Housing Program will be in attendance to assist with rental and utility hardships. Look forward to seeing you there. Finally, after countless interactions and pushback from, and I'm going to break away and tell you guys, the picture on the right, I drove by when I left the office yesterday to take that picture to include.
It was still a shot, sir.
Yeah, exactly. After countless interactions and pushback from the Georgia Department of Traffic, we have finally received approval to move forward with the construction and installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Veterans Memorial Highway and Buckner Road. The agenda item passed just minutes ago, and thank you to my fellow commissioners, to begin the design for the new traffic signal. The next phase will be to advertise for construction in April 2024, with construction to begin shortly thereafter. Construction can take up to a year, but Drew gives me his word that he will seize every opportunity to expedite the process. A special thanks to the community for voicing concern over the years, to Cobb DOT for your continued persistence, and to GDOT for providing this long-awaited safety measure to residents and motorists in the area. This intersection has been the subject of many accidents and unfortunately, some fatalities. So I'm extremely grateful to see this move forward. Books by mail is a free service that provides library materials to Cobb County residents who are unable to visit the library because of physical disability, long-term illness or and/or lack of transportation. Residents may select up to four items at a time, which will include books, books on CDs, DVDs, and any combination. And they will mail them directly to your home with a prepaid return postage provided. If you would like to participate in the books by mail program, please visit cobcat.org/booksbymail for additional information. Attention aspiring journalists and storytellers ages 11 through 15. The Lights, Camera, Action News Reporting Class is set to begin at the Mabel House Arts Center on Thursdays, August 10th through September 14th, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. In this six-week class, students will be introduced to the basics of public speaking. As field reporters, anchor desk reporters, and witnesses, you will improve your communication skills, learn how to collaborate and work in teams, strengthen your thinking and impromptu skills, learn to respond quickly, provide positive feedback to others, and use your imagination in a dynamic world of media. Please visit statsfreeliving.org or mabelhouse.org to register. Six Flags, uh-oh. There should be a Six Flags. Okay, there we go. Six Flags Over Georgia is inviting guests to go beyond the steel with Coaster Fest on Saturday, August 19th, and Sunday, August 20th. This new exclusive festival gives coaster enthusiasts the chance to get up close and personal with some of the most thrilling roller coaster rides in the Southeast with behind-the-scenes tours, lift hill walks, presentations from park officials, and exclusive ride times. Just for Coaster Fest, guests can peek behind the curtain and get a look at the inner workings of Six Flags Over Georgia. Attendees can register for guided tours of various attractions like the Great American Screen Machine, the Riddler Mindbender, Justice League Battle for Metropolis, maintenance buildings, and Fright Fest Haunted Houses. Sounds like a fun event, so hopefully you guys will participate. Okay, okay. The Cobb G-Man, which I referenced in my initial slide for the Tenant Forum, there is a meet and greet this coming Friday in Marietta. They're a nonprofit that will assist in rental assistance as well as utility hardships. You need to register for the event, and you may register at eventbright.com. Again, that's this coming Friday, August 11th, from 12:00 p.m. to 1:30 p.m. I'm sorry, that concludes.
Fantastic. Well, thank you, Commissioners, and that adjourns today's meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.